All right, then call the order of this meeting of the Climate Action Resilience Committee of Blue County Council is Tuesday, November twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, six oh one P M. Go ahead and let's introduce himself, I'll give a roll call, I'm not there, you can be chair.
Dave Rowe.
It's about the Ron Smith.
Ron Smith, counsel.
We've also got Alex Crowley joining us from staff and also just when he is chair, which are the committee commission on sustainability here as well. So I'll run down kind of the slightly more detail than we posted and the roadmap for our evening, I guess. As you all know, we met not too long ago, October eighteen to take some first steps on moving, moving forward on. We can come an action plan strategy T L one dash I, which is to reduce citywide off-road and lawn equipment annual emissions below thirty five thousand metric tons. And we decided in that meeting that we would like to convene some sort of series of public stakeholder and city staff. Hearings in likely every twenty twenty three, but we decided we needed another organizational meeting to work into the, you know, work out what that would look like. How many meetings do you want to attend? How we're going to invite those folks, what that's why I want to try to answer, et cetera. So for the agenda of that, I'd just like to review at a pretty high level. Our, that comes from our last meeting and then the bulk of me, you can get into the details of some of the bearings and how we'd like to approach that. I think it's also probably worth spending a little time on kind of a regulatory landscape in connection to. Gas powered off-road equipment, we had a package this meeting that was resources compiled by Abby Nixing in the council office. And putting together research that she and others in the council office developed over the past few years related to regulations of this type of equipment. In particular, I think it might be worth looking at a resolution that the C S Seattle passed that I sent around via email about an hour. It didn't do the packet for one reason or another, on some sort of security setting on the document, I think. Because I think it is a lot of one approach we could take and kind of have some good, good. Good language and things for us to be thinking about in the context of, of, of regulation. And then finally, if we're planning, we could also talk a little bit about moving noise ordinance, if there's another pathway. And what that says currently and, you know, what, what it, what it authorizes and doesn't and what can be done with that as well. So with that, before I get into kind of a brief review of our last meeting, any questions or? Other I just want to start. No, all right. Okay, um, I think you can re- be here as well, Mr. Crowley, I think staff perspective will be helpful, right? Don't you? So, yeah, again, just to remind, we're looking at and test version land use chapter of climate action plan. There is a strategy specifically focused on significantly reducing. Off-road that gas powered equipment that ranges from things like gas, gas power blowers, lawnmowers, other recreational equipment, snow blowers. And you did construction equipment, so for the small hand, hand carved into larger construction equipment. There are three strategies or actions, I guess, within that strategy. Sort of phase, the, the first one is to have a policy to replace city off-road and lawn equipment with electric and low carbon fuel alternative options. At time of replacement. And, and or an optional exemption to that with requiring proof of need, I think. There's some other related items, but another key, key provision of that action is to encourage the county, school districts and any university to develop and implement their own policies. The next action is to develop an incentive program to convert field wearing lawn equipment. Such as gas power mowers and blowers through electric, suggest coordinating with Duke Energy for support and identification of additional rebate programs to promote this electrification. Then finally, to establish a gap power law equipment phased out ordinance, transitioning law enforcement powered by electricity, alternative tank fuels. And decrease noise pollution levels, so kind of a phased approach, looking at local government operations and related institutions and other governmental units. Then sort of incentives carrot based approach and then phasing in more of a stick type approach of finishing outright ban ultimately. So, so yeah, we're coming out of these broad categories of action, local government operations and the wide array of equipment used by the city as well as contractors. And then this kind of community wide question and how we tackle that, a lot of the resource we shared in the packet around like. Ordinances, specific like, like time of use limitations or outright bans and certain types of equipment are in that kind of community wide category. You know, to consider conservative issues with enforcement and costs and education and equity and the ability to implement something we would enact. So I think it's important to have robust discussion around those options. To wrap up, again, we settled on wanting to have a number of public hearings in our last meeting. I think we settled on for at least the first meeting, we'd like it to be jointly with city staff as well as invited members of the public at large and. Possibly particular stakeholders from like the lawn care and it's very possible hardware stores. And probably some institutions and, and other elements of that meeting as well, so in particular, hopefully M C C S E, I U and our county government. And we can talk a little bit about an agenda for that meeting and the things we'd like to cover. And then, and what the structure should look like, I'm sort of anticipating. Feelings or sending out some questions in advance for staff as well as questions for other, other stakeholders, stakeholders categories to think about in advance of coming to the meeting. But the few items I had drafted down initially were, you know, reviewing the city's climate goals and why we're doing this, covering sort of education around health, environmental. Pollution and quality of life issues related to them and then probably talking about the landscape of regulations and programmatic things that can be done. But I'll, I'll stop there and kind of open it up to folks to see if, you know, does that roughly align with what your preferences are and, and yeah, what you've talked about. Next steps for kind of a series of public hearings.
Does, are we including snow blowers unless it's not mentioned in the climate action plan? I'm wondering if that's, if we're not touching that now, you know, we'll deal with it later, but they, they're also two stroke mentions.
Yeah, what needs?
I think it's the plan says. Off-road, off-road, city, citywide off-road and lawn equipment. I think anything that is fossil fuel. That is driven by fossil fuel combustion, any internal combustion engines for off-road equipment fall under this purview. There's much less of a mention around like construction equipment, right? It's like heavy duty equipment. It's going to be much slower in the transition and maybe more about clean fuels and it might be a longer phase in timeline for what electrification is really viable. So there are different categories, right? In, in the lawn area, we can talk about two stroke or support engines, we can talk about the. Sort of cost categories of equipment, riding mowers versus, you know, brick mowers, that kind of thing that may have substantially different considerations in terms of. Availability of equipment, cost of replacement, all that kind of stuff. But yes, I think, I think technically the way I read it anyway, the snow, snow blowers would fall under this.
And they cited the Edmunds study, you know, in our climate action plan, I thought that's interesting.
Yeah, I was briefing a few, yeah, it's, it's Edmunds study from two thousand eleven, I sent an email to council members and. Trying to clarify what it does and does not say, and I'll brief you in pension, it, it covers three categories of air pollutants, carbon monoxide. Nitrogen oxides and non-methane hydrocarbons, none of which are themselves greenhouse gases. And, and compares air emissions for two-stroke port engines, a yacht and a forward raptor circa two thousand ten eleven. And, you know, thanks to cattle converters and other regulations around the auto industry, emissions are quite low for those types of local, really harmful to human health air pollutants. But they're quite high for two-stroke engine especially. And so there's a quote in particular from that study about it being worse to. As bad as driving from Alaska to Texas to run a blower for thirty minutes, best I can tell, that's true. For non-methane hydrocarbon emissions specifically, which are three hundred times greater with a two-star engine than a forward raptor. That's sort of been presented as this is like a climate disaster and, and, you know, I think we must undergo it and I just wanted to clarify what again, what it said and did not say. That not saying it's within the theory of noise, air pollution, public health issue, it is, you know, but, but it's from a pure like energy density standpoint and like what. Greenhouse gas emissions are, you know, driven by like, like transportation sector, real large and cars like are much bigger problem, like locally than. In gas power equipment. Yeah, yeah.
So I, I, well, first of all, meth, CO2 or carbon monoxide turns into. Spontaneous.
Yeah, yeah, within a few months, I think in the atmosphere, but like. Uh, yeah, I think, it depends, but that one in particular, I mean, the equivalent would have been like, it just goes straight to CO2 emissions. The vehicles, so it's like an equivalency thing, eventually just gone CO2 in the same way.
Yeah.
Those vehicles, but.
Okay, yeah, we, we have to be careful that.
Yeah.
You know, language that would be. Yeah, I mean, you, you know, it's a problem, but comparatively it is. One, one small part, but in any case, so I had a question about just follow up, are you done with your question? So, so we put our, some blowers should be included, lawn equipment, things like that. When, Matt, when you talk about phase, I mean, I'm thinking phase in, in two, regardless, one is, I mean, originally we're talking on leaf blowers. And that to me is the priority, although these are the parts still, I'm, I'm wondering, do we fashion? You know, the legislation to address only leaf blowers from now with an idea. We will get to, you know. It's, it seems like a very tall order to have this address all of these types of equipment. I, I don't know, I'm for a minute, I was like, is that the general feeling or do people like the idea of proceeding everything at once?
All of us, well, I don't know if this is the outcome of why, how the research was done in other ordinances, but it looks like that was sort of the area of focus. At least in the collective ordinance, it's in the packet, like it was heavily, I was noticing like probably ninety percent of it is focused on leaf blowers. And then there's some others that are so that, but I don't know if that was just because someone did a search for leaf blowers.
I mean, there's a lot of equipment that people use, there's two stroke and one is just using chainsaw, which was a two-stroke, but a burrow. So, and things who were not even thinking of it, sure. So anyway, it's the whackers.
Yeah.
So, so I would just say that personally, I would be in favor of comparing them on, on the leaf blower. I think that that'll be better understood by people, I think for a lot of people they've seen as annoyance, it's probably more so than normal. And maybe that would be blocking through if we see them in the first.
I, I'm gonna agree with Dave and if you can understand me. The, doing, doing in some kind of incremental approach as opposed to all at once, I think we'll just freak people out if we do it all at once. But leaf blowers, yeah, people can understand that and it's noisy and obnoxious and then it comes along with, you know, highly polluting. I think, I think I, I was looking at the literature across the internet today. And there's lots and lots of places that are doing, and they're starting with leaf blowers, it appears, that are gas powered, so.
Yeah, and I understand that there's also a temporal, I want to face it in the, or facing out the leaf blowers, seem to strike, you know, that's another. In creation, I suppose, so.
No, I think that's reasonable, I think my, in this sort of information gathering phase over the next few months, and including taking input from, public from other stakeholders, you know, staff. We need to understand what's people, what the barriers are, what are equity concerns, both in terms of. In economies occurring, right? Who's harmed, especially workers? And then also who might be negatively affected by a transition like this, do we need to have some sort of programmatic thing in place as suggested in the climate action plan? To have a rebate program or another option to, to help folks, you know, and maybe, maybe your first. And then, yeah, there's always enforcement questions to do and what's, you know, what can the administration actually reasonably commit to, what's it going to cost? So, yeah, lots, lots of questions in the weeds around that, but I think that as we kind of map this universe of equipment, we don't need to cover every piece of equipment under the sun, but like. I think broad categories would be helpful in some distinguishing between engine types as well as maybe use types and, yeah. Chainsaws are used much less frequently than, 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 uh, leaf blowers, right? And, and I share the, you know, the annoyance around, but I was an opposite, I drop it out you for me, like. You know, I constantly drive mowers around folding blowers up and down the streets, blowing clips, you know, like. Yeah, yeah, it's, that sort of thing's commonplace, and yeah, that's, that's, we really need to work on that, sort of work the vendors for sure. And I think that can, so you can look at new like logical categories of equipment and then even within a category like two-stroke engines. It might be that some certain types have a much greater negative component, right? And so, yeah, I think looking at phasing different types of equipment at different timelines and makes sense. And, and similarly for city operations, like that's kind of thing where, at least for what we own, like spring trimmers, you know, and blowers, like maybe that's easy enough. If you switch to electric by the end of twenty twenty three and everything else is going to be more of a time of replacement type of thing. So, yeah, I think we have a lot of like information gathering to do to figure out what is achievable on that front. In terms of impact, and I think getting, you know, we sort of have more control over city. Operations, obviously, as, as a community, you can inbound things, but if you can't forfeit or limiting compliance, like. You know, we don't have quite the same level of control, so I think on that sort of voluntary commitment side, it can be great, again, to get that university. County government and the school district all with substantial, you know, making substantial grounds engaged, maybe even some larger businesses that have, you know, business campuses and. Different champions in the, in the kind of business community, including in the lawn, lawn care sector, who are willing to, you know, be on the vanguard of, of a transition, help. And straighten and ensure the benefits of that, so I really, I really would like to, to get those stakeholders involved meaningfully. I think this first meeting is going to be a little exploratory, like for a public meeting, again, I think we can. Potentially ask some questions and if you have some issues in advance and ask people to comment and thought about these things, reading some comments if they'd like. I, I have a number of things in particular for the city that I think we need to be thinking about, but probably other groups too. And then where if it's from there, I'm not sure, we might want to wait and see how the meeting goes and what sort of emerges as logical, there might be a few. Pathways that we want to take from that that are drilling down more specifically to a certain area, like. To blowers, I guess, like leaf blowers and, and what, what can we, you know, achieve on that front, maybe through. Cause there's a pathway to outright bans to still incentivize and disincentivize their use, right? Like you could have a rebate program, you could have a public education program, you can try to find champions to voluntarily switch. And you can start to potentially time limit their use, again, you had an enforcement question about what's, what can we actually achieve in, you know. Compliance with that, but all those things are not mandates, but they are really trying to move the needle and get those. So, so, yeah, I, I mean, how does it feel about? Is your preference to set a number of meetings, like in advance, the, either the dates with the subjects as well? Or would we rather have a first meeting that's a bit more exploratory and see based on the conversation, what emerges as like priority areas?
That sounds good to me because I wouldn't know what the topic would be for a second meeting, we, we can narrow them down. And I just agree that focusing on leaf blowers makes sense, it's interesting.
Yeah, a public meeting exploratory would be simply to put forward the proposition and then explain, have a little presentation. In terms of the motivation that the city has to do this with the city plans and doing its for itself.
Yeah.
Understanding that there is a, there's a cost to this. They, certainly businesses have more cost, you know, stake and, and then hearing from them. I mean, I'm curious to know if they're already in the process of facing that, you know. I have no idea, you know, certain businesses might be interested in already. I would assume some, some businesses are going to feel like this is. Government trying to, you know, over regular business, so having this idea of incentives. Maybe part of the presentation saying that, you know, we, we understand there's a cost to this, but we think there's a great public benefit. We would like everyone's involvement, we're partly interested in how we would offset this cost, so.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm with you there, the first meeting, if it's exploratory, you'll find out where we need to go for the next ones. And, and what's on people's minds. The other, the other thing I just wanted to say. Was at some point, there's going to have to be something about compliance that's brought forward. Cause you know, somebody from the public will ask, what, you know, what does that mean that, you know, if I have a leaf blower and. So I think at that meeting. Some response to that so that it doesn't. So that it comes off like we're thoughtful and, and that we're, you know, trying to figure out what to do here, I think would be a good idea.
Um, Ron, did you mean some discussion of enforcement?
Yeah, I think that has to be, I think it has to be part of it. And I certainly would downplay that in the beginning, you know, so we don't upset everybody all of a sudden and then, you know. But I think at some point, compliance and enforcement has to be brought forward because somebody in the public is going to ask us.
Yeah, and, and I think I want, I want to make sure that we're. Doing this in a way that, that sort of incremental and. Really is about information gathering at this point and understanding what the constraints are and what's manageable. I'm hoping that by bringing people in and inviting them at this early stage, as we know, we'll see, we've seen much less so as, as. You know, a heavy handed sort of thing, I, I don't think we need to lead with, with bands, if you can talk about that being in the climate action plan, but that's not. That's the last thing on the list of kind of things we're trying to do on that front. It might be that that's suited for some types of equipment, but I, I think it's premature to kind of make that call right now. And, and not, not just because of sort of feasibility and, and cost concern, but also again, enforcement, figuring out what's actually achievable. That as well as, I mean, there's kind of this elephant in the room, you know, franchise related issues, we, hard to know where that goes. We probably have almost certainly have the authority under, under noise, governing noise, unless they were to, I guess, the state can always carve out. Except it's for anything they want to, but what you can and can't regulate, but, you know, it would pretty recently fall under. Noise right now and the desal levels are significantly higher on gas power, uh, blowers in particular as opposed to. Electrics, you could, you could probably segment the, the market in that way. And our noise ordinance does have not only sort of general provisions, but also some specific uses that are called out as being covered by this ordinance. So that's something we could, we could look into. I, okay, so I guess what, what if it's, just from a overall standpoint, like when folks want to get started on this, like I'm thinking early next year, but like, is January? Reasonable, January, February, I mean, what if it was?
And this is what I was hoping that Alex might share with us. I, I think we need to better understand where the city is, what the inventory is, what the city's current plan is, there is one. At public meetings, so we can say, okay, well, internally, and this is for rat and city. So I don't know, you had talked, you and Warren had talked about that there was an inventory in progress with some departments, some information you had, some you were waiting for.
We have parks pretty well down there, public works, I think is where we need to just kind of close that room. I would say that also one of the things that would be important to understand in terms of timing is when do, so I, you know, there's, I think you laid out well that there's kind of like. Us, there's, there's the institutions that we might be able to lean on a little bit that are not us, but are close to being us. And then there's everybody else, but I think everybody else also breaks into two groups, it's the, it's the commercial use and then personal use. And I think one of the reasons why we, we want to think about the timing, especially on the commercial use, which is probably going to be the hardest one for people to. Wrap their brain around is when are the buying decisions made for equipment in that sector? Because I think that will maybe help influence, you know, like I have no idea, do they go through one leaf blower every year because they use it so much or they? That, that kind of stuff may actually influence the timing of how we proceed with this, because if we need to be making some decisions early on and they're making their purchasing decisions in March or whatever. That would be really difficult to know in advance.
I don't think we can know until we invite, and I think that's one of the types of questions we can ask them, right? Like, are you thinking about, and are you concentrated, like, what is the average lifespan of an equipment with your level of use, like in these categories or the main company you use? But, yeah, I don't know, we'll know some of that kind of stuff in advance, I agree, it's relevant.
So to that point, maybe, maybe sooner rather than later, having an initial, so that we can start to lay down some of the future timing.
That's reasonable for folks, maybe like late January?
Yeah, I mean, I. Like to see the results of the inventory and, and what the administration plans to do as far as phases and that, I mean, I want to have that clearly. My mom, I, well, input, we need to get a.
So I, I sort of had the same view, Isabelle, and in a couple of previous climate action team meetings, I kind of said as much and the mayor sort of. A mind otherwise, he, he doesn't mind seemingly having the public conversation, the community scale conversation moving in parallel. Even if they weren't out there, I think, ma- maybe we table the, the timing of meeting, conversation for a minute and kind of get into some of the questions that like. I have for city staff and that like perhaps we can get answered in advance of that meeting. And I, I don't know if we have to have like a commitment in hand that we will phase out all two prevented by the end of twenty twenty four, like for us to proceed with the C F B. I think the fact that we're talking about it and trying to establish those timelines is, I've come around, I'm, I'm, I'm open to that, so, I don't know, is that? Let's, let's really set the meeting time aside for a second, maybe talk to some of these questions and issues and like see if that's, that factor, is that?
Yes.
All right. So I'll just, y'all may have others, I'll quickly run down the, the list that came to mind for me. One was of course a quantitation of, of city owned equipment, ideally grouped into categories. And if you can, if you can have some information, you know. If you have vintage, you know, on the equipment, estimated lifespan of given equipment, that kind of thing, like more, more information is better, I kind of, I think. Another one was sort of willingness of city staff to both spend staff time and potentially financial resources on a rebate or. Trading program, public education campaigns and that sort of thing. And what, what stat community is on that, you know, what, what reason would be committed related to that would be. Staff's willingness and ability to work with big energy or others on that kind of rebate like question as, as a. Working on the climate action plan, and then I think the third major category that I have was. Willingness and ability to enforce potential regulations as well as input on what would be, what that, what that could look like or what would be reasonable to enforce. And possibly associated costs, you know, there's all sorts of things we have in the city that are enforced, for instance, you know, we don't. We don't catch every person who doesn't pay, I mean, or we have some sort of scattered shot, you know, attempt to, to keep you blind, but you can, you can certainly get away with not paying, you're quite often and that is. Pretty low, you know, things like that, so it's a similar kind of question, right? Like what is, what is enforcement really look like if someone calls to complain about this thing, can we have it on the books? What is that, what's our ability to, to completely look at that?
I assume.
Right.
And then, yeah, my question is, does it enforce?
And, and also, which is why like incentives programs and public education, all the rest, it's important because it's only complaint based, it's going to be a very limited. Actual impact, if people change, people want to know about it, they don't care.
So is that adequate then, to be complaint based on? When you should get, it's a very, you know, I don't know.
Hand involved, I mean, hand, bridges out to the apartment complexes, what they do with their. Hand involved. I mean, hand, uh, bridges out to the apartment complexes, what they do with their landscaping and, um, you know, rental loans and they have connections with, uh, they have association signs, so Angela or somebody could visit and they each have association signatures. I mean, we're all one. I mean, it would take concerted outreach effort, but I think it seems that, um, council, best decision to do that.
Yeah, I mean, the most, the most stringent can't run a leaf blower unless it is registered city. And that, I mean, we have an idea. But that seems really obvious, I mean, that would not separate people. But how else do you determine? Can I put it at a distance, but I tell the difference between, uh, an electric?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, so, so, so it's possible they have a patrol. But then what is that? But, uh, I mean, maybe it is scare shot, just to get the, anyway, I'm just sorry, working through these ideas, but the, I, I would assume that the first step would be a warning, the next step would be a fine and have a certain lines. So that it's serious.
Alex, those kind of broad category questions though, uh, qualification of, of lead and some information about that. Also, I guess, things great mentioned in the last kind of actually meeting that parks contracts a lot of its, um, lawn care maintenance, so they don't do it all themselves. There's a whole other wrinkle on the city. Uh, that is working with business, but yeah, the sort of, um,
Well, the city has some power.
Yeah.
Who wants that contract?
Yeah, for sure. Actually, so yeah, uh, safely, um, kind of, uh, programmatic things around rebates, public education, et cetera, and then, uh, sort of enforcement questions and inputs. Uh, if we had some questions in writing, uh, to that effect, like within the next few weeks, would that be reasonable?
Yeah, yeah, for, I mean, I think all the co- I mean, certainly the quantification effort is already underrated. Shut up, that's not the, the real. I think from a rebate, Duke, I mean, we're involved with Duke anyway, so I think that's not an incrementally a huge lift to talk to them about what they do and what's, what the options are. Think administering the programs, let's get into, you know, cause I'm assuming probably would call the ESD to do that, you know, think it was a little bit more stat impactful and try to, try to take on too much, uh, for administration, but I think you can look at that. I think for the enforcement, you know, I was thinking the interesting model is, is, uh, food truck licensing, right, where you've got these rules. We're not walking, I'm not walking the sidewalk at 1:30 at night to figure out whether or not, you know, the cheese truck is actually hard for them to be parked, but there's a kind of like structure in place where if they grossly violate the rules you put in place, because the rules are in place, now the person who is feeling violated has the ability to actually leverage, and we can leverage something. It's a, it's a pretty interesting model, so it's not, it's not personnel heavy, um, necessarily, but it gives you that kind of backstop that you needed if someone's violating, uh, you know, play, right? Right? So that's very different than part of enforcement where you're really walking around and trying to take it home, which is other level of play, which I think is probably less appealing to staff than something more akin to, you know. It seems like, I like the idea of incentives, so many, like, you know, and the process, it seems to me if you can, if you can get a new leaf blower at a cost, why not? Why not? Fix it out. I mean, most of your local fear is over sharing and having two stroke regardless, uh, I think it's, uh, more offensive than sharing. Uh, but anyway, uh, so I wonder what that incentive situation looks like. Do you have an idea of what, uh?
Well, you know, just thinking of our own approach, so we have some money set aside in the, uh, budget to help enter, not the internal migration of the credit, right? And, and the incentive is not to cover the, but it's really the, to the differential, where, where there is a differential, there may, there may not be that much of a differential as time goes on as the market begins to shift. So, you know, I think it has a structure that is focused on if there is a burden to the migration, kind of relieve as much of that burden as possible. Um, kind of like electric vehicles, right, where federal subsidy can help us suppressing costs. Then, then that's maybe where we.
Well, I don't even, is there a cost differential between the two struggling electric? I think the electric is cheapest, too, straight, right? So it's just a matter of like calling it right at this device, you know, in many ways, you know, what, what's the lifespan, right, and get a new one.
Right.
And I can get cheap now or cheaper than we would have saved from this from now, yeah. But they do, they surrender. They literally surrender. They come in to the city and say, here's your two-stroke. You know, give them away.
Yeah. Yeah.
Something like that, which the administrative, it's a lot of work.
And that might be a very different play if you're dealing with.
Sorry, chances are, our personal use equipment probably lasts a lot longer. Do you think the city is prepared to do this? Do you think the city is prepared to?
Uh, you know, one of the things, I was looking at the incentive program, like, uh, the co- uh, cities that were listing them alongside their, their, their legislation, um, and what popped into my head was, I wonder if there's any, um, EPA um, programs that, you know, it seems like it's a, an issue that's coming forward. Whatever there's an EPA program that, you know, might help us. Um, and I, you know, I don't know the answer and I, I'll be happy to look up some tomorrow, but, uh, it's worth a shot.
Anybody know? Is there a free money?
I don't know. It wouldn't shock me if something snuck into the IRA that could qualify, you know, in particular, could like a utility program. I would be looking at that. I just, it's a little outside my space, I don't run into that, but, um, but yeah, there, I mean, there might be options there. In fact, we could invite Duke and folks from, you know, uh, if I'm just do, you know, to join, if, if they'd be going. Um, and, and to, yeah, um, yeah, anyway.
Uh, so I think the short answer is that, yeah, we can kind of, you know, I have the questions captured here, so I have a pretty good jump on it, but, but if we can, if there are others, if, if you've been kind of putting together shifts in the Marway, then we can search this and round the answers.
Yeah. And I think, uh, that can become then just part of the package for the meeting and we can, we, many members can dig a little deeper on some of them and talk about that, you know, at some point. Um, again, my, I was concerned a little bit initially about, um, that being less relevant to other stakeholders in the room, but I think you're right, Alex, that like there's some value and everybody kind of seeing that we're like literally figuring this all out together, um, and then different tracks, I think, right, along the seven, if you hear that's, that's fine. Um, I, I had some, are there other questions? I mean, we can circulate something among the members and, and, uh, you know, and, and council members to try to, uh, put together a, a kind of reasonable list of questions for staff. Um, I think, uh, yeah, should we move on to like other stakeholders and are folks comfortable with that approach?
Yeah, so, um, the council saying that if, for other types of rebates or incentives, the city is focused on covering difference, like the silver. But in this case, I don't think the electric So, um, I guess we need to frame it in that, oh, this is a replacement. Next time we replace here, this is what we like. Um, and if we, if we say next time we do it, then they're really not out any money. You know, we have saw yard, I, we have electric. We have other yard tools that are electric, um, and there's no problem with charging them and stuff, but I don't know how that would go for a commercial enterprise. And, you know, if, if it's not, if it's not a battery pack, maybe it's less long enough and then put it in somewhere or is it from it? So, I mean, there, there certainly are.
So I just Googled and Evanston is buying. It looks like they're gonna buy leaf blowers for landscapers. They've got tender leaf blower, electric leaf blower stuff, about fifteen hundred dollars each. And we've got thirty thousand dollars for this program. So you're just gonna buy.
Fifteen hundred dollars each?
Seventy hundred dollars and send thirty thousand. So, yeah.
But the city is just,
Well, to the entrepreneurs, to the businesses, so they're saying the premier, two-stroke, here's a free, uh, electric. And that's it. Now, you know, that's, that's what Evanston is doing, so I'm not saying we do that, but.
I, um, I, I spoke with the sustainability staff person in Evanston, um,
Oh, you did?
Who, who kind of shared this like a nightmare to administer historically. Maybe that is what led to this decision, honestly. Because it was such a stock on staff resources and so difficult to, uh, import or do anything with, that it became a really problematic opportunity cost for what they were trying to accomplish on all their other clients. Uh, so it might, that might be the low-cost option to actually, you know, manage what they, what they, uh, were trying to do. So I, I, I've asked her for a follow-up conversation just to get into the details a little bit more as we get into the details here, but I think there are probably some cautionary tales out there with respect to how to do this year, uh, four year or, or, or less four year on enforcement and, and kind of craft regulations. I think that probably has the staff can look into a little bit. Like we have this sort of library of, of options and, and you can start to maybe reach out actually to engage uh, staff from other cities to hear like how it's gone, but, you know, whether they would do it the same way or if they weren't. Um, that's maybe another step, kind of an interim, uh, between now and then, another meeting. I don't think it's absolutely vital to like have that driven sort of out by that meeting, but it's something to keep advancing as well.
I think to the extent, you know, that, uh, we can make it a win for the hardware store, right, uh, and look for opportunity, which can also relieve us, ourselves. Um, but some way to kind of share the wealth of the program, I mean, for the ones financing, sometimes we have to do it ourselves so that we know it's done the way we want it to, but maybe that's not the way to do it.
Um, so for, for stakeholders, I think on the sort of commercial side, there's a commercial, uh, um, lawn care type businesses, uh, is mainly what we're thinking about right now. Uh, and then there's also potentially the hardware stores. Are there other commercial categories and commercial entities that would recently be, uh?
Well, I'm wondering, uh, private, um, real estate owners, I mean, the owners of rental property that has yards.
Yeah.
Lots of houses that have their own yards.
Probably contract somebody, right? And that's, that's pretty difficult work. Uh, so if we're covering the business sector, like on the, the, the services sector, like that's probably mostly covered, but I think that's large, large, um, rentals companies might still be useful to engage. Because if it becomes a landscape of, uh, some companies that are extremely going to electric and others that are not, might be useful to, to, to share information and try to. Yeah. Um, a, a few questions I drive it down, I think we can circulate something, you know, but for lawn care companies are, are you thinking about electrifying your equipment? What are, uh, get various experienced or worry about with respect to changing to electric equipment? Um, and then asking about any equipment replacement time cycles, when are purchasing decisions made? Uh, how quickly do you go through the different types of equipment you use? Um, I don't know. I'm gonna get the kind of more encircled things, but are there other questions about that, that they had? They'd like to know.
Yeah, I'm trying to, like, trying to imagine, like, reaching out. Obviously, if you're a commercial lawn care service and you're, you know, this is gonna be seen probably initially as a bonus. So, I think, I'm imagining that we send them a letter introducing the policy, uh, in comments, maybe online, early, so that we have an idea of the concerns before the, you know, the broader meeting. Um, and, and having, you know, questions targeted regarding their, their interest in it, it doesn't matter. They may have already an interest in this. And two-stroke don't last forever, you know? And about a great deal, only one of the refrigerators burn out, and we're maybe phasing into electric. And then if there's possible opposition, kind of, and what are the activists you see in the maintenance? What are the costs you see bringing? Something like, um, you probably could follow up with a phone policy, just to, to, to get a long sight. And what you wanna work with here, make this as famous as possible, but you think this is public good. And, gosh.
They could take credit.
Yeah, and when they do, you know, so I'm really concerned about climate change too.
Yeah, I think this, the outreach for the central base, it needs to be significant as well, and I think that's something that maybe council staff can work with, maybe needs to coordinate with city staff too, um. And I like, I really like maybe invite, you know, framing some questions and having, uh, you know, whatever you may explain, what aren't we asking about, right? But then inviting comment in advance, uh, with this sort of cut-off timeline, you know, like, just the opportunity to weigh in if it can't be at the meeting, and also give us the, uh, what are the issues, the same way that we're, we, we know that a little more clarity with the city, um, operation side of the conversation, but, uh, yeah, I think that'd be helpful. Um.
Any of these, uh, lawn care companies, um, provide health insurance since the employees are probably more seasonable, but they could running some electric versus gas powered.
Right? I mean, it definitely is like a substantial, uh, health hazard for workers. That's the third. Um, what about hardware? We're sending, uh, we just wanted to ask them if they are aware of rebates, uh, like, did they have ideas about how to help accelerate a transition to electric, electric equipment, like what?
Yeah, could be, could be, uh, maybe even ask about, you know, their, their trend lines of, of equipment, you know, over time. They might have a good idea of the roads, right, the market.
The market, how's it shifting?
Yeah. How nice is it with hazzies?
I thought some really good data, but, oh, pardon me.
What's that?
I was gonna say, some really good data that, uh, in my mind would be important was if we, uh, talk to our stakeholders, uh, meaning like, uh, a group that does lawn care or five groups that do lawn care, I wonder, um, you know, how many, um, gas leaf blowers they have? And, um, you know, what the age of those leaf blowers are. So then, then it would be, might be an easy into, um, uh, talking them into going that direction, you know, well, we've got rebates and we're figuring this out and, you know, if, if, if they had five or six, it'd be pretty easy. If they have a hundred, that'd be a different story, but, um, it'd be nice if they would tell us and we could take an inventory of them.
I think to, to your point, the, there's probably, probably two uni- the two universes of, of lawn care companies too, right? You've got the kind of more industrial, bigger, uh, more established, and then you've got the mom and pop, and they might have very different, uh, what both inventories, right, but also, um, lots, I mean, we should be thinking of them as being sub, you know, subwords that we should expect it for answers from.
Yeah, like there's some basic questions to ask, like what types of equipment do you use? Um, how many employees do you have, that kind of thing, just to know. Yeah, maybe there's others.
I only have fourteen lawn care services. No, this is limited area, so it's probably, you know, nine or ten in the city. And maybe, maybe that doesn't, you know, you have guys just running his own leaf blower, you know, might not be listed in there, but, um, just learn that, man, uh, I, especially, I don't, I mean,
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know the population that is.
More thoughts or questions for either hardware stores or lawn care companies? I mean, again, this is not the last chance, we'll certainly.
So are we gonna, ours and loads, I mean, that's, I think for most people.
Yeah, I think so. And we definitely wanna include the, the mutual value and, uh,
I don't.
Under, she find her purse. Yeah.
Um, J. S. Locksmith also sells mower, um, mowers, I don't have any stuff.
Yeah. Earl thing? I don't know what, I guess that's a new county, but certainly serve the market. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say also the on-service companies, they don't have.
Yeah. And yeah, to move on to residents. Um, for sort of personal use, like you mentioned, of equipment, but there's also people who are impacted by it. By abuse, um in particular noise pollution seems to be the the main driving uh factor for um. Uh, yeah, losing this uh over, let's say, you know. Air air pollution necessarily, but I guess there's a worker, that's a little bit of a different dimension as well. Um, a lot of workers would be comfortable saying that they don't like using uh their employer's equipment, but. Anyways, go ahead.
I was wondering, um, if we have a meeting. That we advertise broadly in the general public and the district should find it, that there's lawn care people in IU um. Are we gonna spend a lot of the meeting with residents just complaining about noise and pollution? Um, it almost seems like. I mean, I'm certain I wouldn't want to exclude anybody from any meeting, but maybe we should. The first meeting or one, one meeting at least should be only airports. Um, lawn companies, service providers. We know that we want to, we don't need to be convinced by or employed by the leaf blowers. It's a problem, you know? I'm just concerned if if we, if there's a bunch of people who are just pissed off about leaf blowers, they kind of, they. Take up, you know, an hour of the meeting just complaining, that's not gonna help.
We can structure the meeting uh for one, you know, like we can make sure that we stick tightly to a particular agenda, trying to like, it doesn't. We we tend to do things in a very um, it's public comment area now and everybody say whatever you want, but like. The committees are flexible, we can do whatever we want with it, we can say, sure, it will like, it could be that the. The open public comment, say anything is the online form, and we're using this meeting in a different way to dig into certain issues and questions. We might still want to invite public comments, see how many people are there, reserve twenty or thirty minutes for that or something. But I think it will make more sense to ask for answers to questions and say, we're curious to hear more. We heard this, you know, in in early feedback from lawn care companies, we're interested to learn more about uh. These particular barriers you mentioned for folks representing those sectors, like tell us more, you know, invite them to the podium or the table or whatever it is. Where we're committing, like it can definitely be more structured than what we typically do and uh considering pending legislation, I think.
Yeah, I like that too. I I wouldn't, I wouldn't exclude public.
Right.
But leave and actually, I queried people at the beginning, how many here are annoyed by? But raise your hand, you know, because I don't want the repetition on, I'm annoyed because every morning I wake up and make coffee. Et cetera, and last Saturday, et cetera, so you know, we don't need all these anecdotes. Uh but we get to know, you know, people have some unique insight, you know, like things we're not considering too. But I'm mostly interested in businesses. Pretty good on our board's potential partners.
Does anybody know whether IU uses their own personnel to do most of the brands or?
I think so. I don't, I don't have like a full systems level view of that, but uh. My impression from a few different meetings over time, people have known that, like actually Matt, Matt called me interestingly enough. Uh did uh some cleanup of the stadium, I'm working on a job doing that, they use blowers to clean the stadiums uh and blowing downstairs. Um and I I think he was an IU employee in doing that, perhaps I'm just assuming, uh he's at IU now, but. But again, we can learn more from.
Yeah.
Jessica Davis and also whoever's in the, she's, she knows, she has a credibility, they're very, show up with the directors, you, there's people in that. In that division, I would previously talk to Michaela by about this a little bit, and she was still at you, she the.
Okay, yeah, I mean, would the sustainability office know who would invite her facilities?
Yeah, yeah, it should. They're also in the, in the process of developing their own climate action plan, um which might be helpful. Yes, yeah. No, but uh and they're kind of early stages, but I mean, when they're looking at their emissions and. They 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 should and will look at off-road equipment too, not just, you know, vehicles. Um, so it it may be a. Additional motivation for them at some level that it would need to engage and try to figure out some ways that timelines would, you know?
So. I'm sorry, I'm uh I I'm just ignorant about this, but the. The pollution that you cited in your email exchange with um. Her primary, pure primary, um, those gases are not greenhouse gases, right? So I'm wondering how this factors into reducing our emissions. I mean, emissions in the context of climate action, action that are greenhouse gas.
Yes, there are also greenhouse gas emissions. That study did not look at them. So there are also primarily CO2 emissions uh when you combust any any missile, generally speaking. Um, so yes, there's also CO2 emissions, they're warped by, again, sort of like. It's an energy density, like conservation of math, like the amount of fuel burned for uh this, at least the smaller. The company that we're talking about is is warped by what a car burns, you know, to get around the power of three thousand ton vehicle. Um, so the CO2 emissions are are much bigger in case of transportation. Um, as compared to like small, small off-road equipment, I guess, but it's the other types of. Because they're not regulated well, uh two-stroke engines have a particular mechanism by which they're, you know, especially polluting, uh it's this. Other types of air pollutants that that are not themselves CO, uh greenhouse gas emissions that are uh especially harmful. And I, in that case.
Well, I see this as, you know, a first and necessary step in basing out things other than ours. Yeah, other, other carbon burning, of course, uh uh equipment and. Uh but, Matt, you mentioned, you know, the self hazards in terms of noise, greenhouse gases, and then we have the noise. To me, the noise, you know, maybe I can grasp it, but it's represented by. I would instead as the decimal and the frequency of it, and and both of them annoy people. Um, so we would aim at something that is lower in decibel, and we would aim at something that is. I don't know what frequency is the most annoying to people, Q knows, Q knows very well, in fact, I think we're exactly. The range, but that's something that we need to focus on too, right? As in terms of this ordinance. Uh, because we want to live that in. Um, and so it's, it's health, welfare and safety of the population, so we. It all fits within our purview council. Um. Um, so uh.
Well, the the health concerns.
Well, oh, I know what the last one is, and I just want to throw this out there, that we're thinking about regulating the devices, but not thinking about regulating. Time for the users, so if we want to, you know, allow people, you know, it's. Decimal free except for birds on Sunday, we might want to consider that as a menu ordinance, I don't know. I I, you know, it's it stands apart in a way and it's and it's and it's also has mobile access.
Yeah.
You know, human welfare, um but I just want to throw that out and see what you're, are you thinking the same?
Yeah, I think that's like on the, on the menu of options of like how to, how to face. Phase uh equipment types, like uh you could, you could just go with an outright ban of. Gas equipment in certain categories immediately if you want to, you could also say, we're gonna time limit it to certain season, accommodate things. We already do that with fireworks in the noise ordinance, um so we specify when they can be used, um literally specific days, hours. Uh so and and there are a lot of example ordinance, if you add a sort of time limiting, I think I saw one or two that say kind of like no more. Can't be continuous use beyond like a certain amount as well. I know, I think. A neighbor of of Mr. Travers in particular, uh has a large grounds and employs a lawn care company that engages in blowing for hours at a time. That's what the uh source of his particular, um especially a root just, you know, sort of annoyance, um. So, so yeah, you know, you could get at some of, and that's where like resident input could be helpful in that meeting too, it's like. Uh, that's a sort of unique case and a very narrow set of uh users, you know, using equipment in that way. Might be entirely reasonable to say, yeah, pretty quick, we're gonna say like that, some version of that is not allowed, but we're not allow, we're not allow you to keep. Using the equipment for for certain times to get out of your business or to forward your business, but uh not all the time. And then we're also gonna look at a whole phase out, you know?
Yep.
Yeah, I would want to consider that as.
Yeah, right.
And and just to say, if we made like Sunday a day without leaf blowers. I think that the commercial interest would probably be favorable because I think that they operate in some ways, again, wrong. Doesn't matter to them, we mostly personal uh users. Have complaints about that, but I think it'd be dwarfed by the number of people who would say, great, have one day at ease. On a weekend, that's my train. Um.
Yeah, I was just looking at Arnold's performance news TV.
Except for the ones where they get specifics, so there are.
It's all. And sound like the music.
But this sound, is it just made up or is it any sound?
They use or operate or, I mean, they use or operate, I mean, radio, television, digital media, they allow speakers, sound amplifier, split. Any other machine or device producing or reproducing sound at a volume that's louder than necessary.
Louder than necessary.
But but in the end, hearing a person's whisper inside the vehicle, it's not about the.
Yeah.
So it was obviously to address boom lovers.
Yeah, there's some respect for people's premises as well, and like there are some time duration things in there. Um, not just hours a day, but duration of disturbance essentially, and how long it can go on. Um, so yeah, I mean, the the sort of types of things we might do are are mostly apps like, and the noise organs are ready, I think.
Do you think the January meeting is too soon? Um, so there are these questions coming to. Specifically what we actually derive from the meeting. And and also the, we want enough lead time, so we send. For businesses a letter and give them fair warning that this is coming.
How, how soon can we get an online survey set up?
That seems pretty simple, like a Google form type of thing, you know, but uh it, I imagine it will take. I think it's pretty busy right now, council office and audits are coming, and it may take several weeks to sort of develop a list for outreach. Finalize the questions, that sort of thing, um it might be to look maybe for original real estate and be sort of. Give the public blasts out in January. Uh with like a four, four weekly time or something like that, I don't.
So the agenda in our next meeting could be, we discuss the survey.
Oh, sure, I would, I would um potentially envisioning uh. Circulating some of the, like the uh the questions that were passed from what we expect here and having input, you know, offline and. And if we can sell something unnecessarily, you know. Your concerns, Stephen, about?
Well, one approach, if you, if you want to get some of this housekeeping, big therapist, Kelly, uh the chair, the report. Ironing out these details, uh I think we're getting a list of questions together. Uh, you know, that can certainly be done by asking the individual members to sit close to the council office. Uh getting uh a list of uh attendees together, I think committee needs to to meet again through that. Certainly, but it needs another meeting, you can schedule one, but some of these might be delegated to the chair or to a many member to just. Autored staff in your head, I I'd agree with the workload between now and the end of the year, especially if the. Council staff uh needs to start contacting other communities to ask about their, their experiences implementing some of the. Legislation they've gathered uh or researching beyond legislation, I know that's what we focus on, legislative branch, but uh. We want to do such a programs or incentives that other communities have offered. Have to tackle that, I'm just saying, so I I'd say, you know, now the end of the year might be a good time frame for us to get. Some of these things together, uh with maybe, you know, invitation out to the companies early in the January with the. To follow up by mentioning that that we're, I think that's a realistic, I mean, I'd say too, depending on what is actually working. Uh the treasury staff and why wouldn't. Ask, and that, that would be more out of questions that you're preparing, so uh if you'd like them to have answers to that before the meetings. Have time to review that's, that's, you know, some lead time if you want them to come for the meeting with that information, it's a better amount of time, so. I think it would be a really productive meeting we had, um if uh the invitations to these companies would go out. And there would be an online survey before it's happened, so it's sort of could be opening, it could be. So are in an institution, many of these are commercial, these are personal, these are of this type of equipment. And maybe if just a few questions about whether they're favorable or not to phase out an electric, that's et cetera. Um, and then some common space, and then aggregate those and read them before we meet with these people. And so we have an idea, you know. You know, how favorable they are and, you know, what we're, we might be able to provide them some answers to their questions. Because they, they might not even approach them, that this is coming, and other, other municipalities that information with the tap. You know? I don't want to be caught flat footed at the meeting, you know, they're coming and they're angry and. And this is a good thing, and other cities are doing it. It's kind of might be in your interest, so. Yeah. So that seems like it's gonna take some weeks to do that, um.
I'm always a fan of like, what's the end, right? Like, what is, what is the theme that? Legislation would be passed so that we can work backwards to it, right? And feels like. Introducing something mid-season is difficult. So that.
Depends on the timeline of legislation.
What's that?
It depends on the timeline in the legislation.
Yeah.
It hasn't been seen, let's say.
It's effective, whatever, yeah, but I, it might be good also to consider amongst ourselves, like what is, what is that, like? We could kind of dictate what that looked like, what is the sequence? And you can kind of work back, it's all right, we want to try to get this passed, you know, during. Scratch or whatever, right, then then, okay, well then, maybe we need to have um.
You know, I've waited ten years for a year and it's. Uh, it would be great to have it done by this coming year, as soon as the mains.
Introduced and then have it kick in for the.
Yeah, and then depending upon how it plays out and how the incentives work and whether we get. Again, you know, how to phase it in, but yeah, ask and then. I don't know, phasing it over. Next months or year or whatever, right?
I think it's a little, a little hard to know at the state, and there's a variety of factors here, right? There's like. Are we admit resources like programmatically, and there's, there's a couple education campaign partners, um you know, there's the rebate piece. That the legislation that would either phase out towards a ban and or limit the time of use. Of certain types of equipment, like it's just one piece overall, we could also legislate the timeline for uh. We're electrifying certain types of equipment for the city, you know, or not, like that's, I think, a kind of discussion too, so there's. There's been multiple pieces of legislation, um but this is. This is three actions under a strategy, I'm actually planning, that necessarily involves like a variety of policy tools, it's not. Not just a one, I think, so it's um. a variety of policy tools. It's not, not just a one, not an ordinance, I think, so it's, um, but yeah, I, I think that the goal will be to, uh, as time allows, as capacity allows, keep moving forward on this at a reasonable pace until we can, uh, settle on solutions that we think are, are, you know, yeah, best and, and, I don't know, mid-year, next year sounds nice, but, hard enough, you know? It's, it, which is, we're, we're very much an exploration based, so learning what the, the opportunities and real issues are, and, uh, if, if it means slowing down to get, more buy-in, uh, I think that's, that's going to be much more important than just throwing down a ban that we can, of course, like, I think, I, I don't think that's fair enough. Um, so I think taking the time to kind of do it right, uh, I think is important, and, you know, I think we discussed it last meeting a month ago, um, Indianapolis is, or maybe it was going to be a custom meeting, Indianapolis is obsessed with their energy benchmarking program, um, uh, for commercial buildings. It's like, they, it's not a mandate yet. It's a voluntary reporting system, and they sought companies to get involved, and they have tripled the demand of what they thought they, there were a hundred and fifty companies voluntarily benchmarking their energy before, um, and, and so, yeah, that's really great. It's, it's, uh, you know, if we can work on, on getting some, uh, through education, through engagement, getting people bought into this, and, and, uh, that this is our ancient tradition, can be part of that solution. But that's, that's really great. And then again, the institutions and our government units as well. So, yeah, I think it's hard to know an ending just yet for. The, the thing is that, especially probably the landscape companies and hardware stores, some of the commercial like this predictability is everything, right? And so even if sometimes we withhold, uh, any information until we have all the information, and I kind of feel like it's probably, it's probably not a bad idea to say, hey, we're not sure exactly what this is going to look like, but it's probably coming, so if you're making decisions about, whatever, you know, keep that in mind, right? Yeah, yeah. I think that's reasonable. I mean, I think even in the, inviting a survey, like, uh, it's, yes, it's information gathering, but like also, here are the three actions in this adopted plan that we are working on advancing, like this, this is happening, like this is, you know, in some form, the question is how, not whether, but, um.
I, I think an, an easy way to, to reach out to companies is point to the point of action plan and say, look, this is an adopt point in the city. We're, we're scheduling a meeting. We want to take a look at how these actions might play out here. You would be affected by this, so invite me to come in, speak with us and work. We're doing an internal discussion on how the city might meet these, these goals and actions, and we want to hear from you. We're still gathering information itself. Um, I think that's a, a good, non-heavy-headed approach, like we're talking about to, uh, bring them in early. I mean, uh, that's, that's a good approach. Um, I, I think that's doable, uh, I certainly, I'm certain it's not hard to set up a Google form, get a survey set up, but I think, you know, it's still, you know, weeks of time, maybe all put up on some of the questions and recent topics. So if you, you know, want to have this meeting, you want, want to, you would look to.
You know, it'd be really helpful when we contribute the point to have some people who have knowledge, services, from person, right, or, or repairs done in, in public works, so that, or utility, wherever they, where repairs them, so that, you know, because I, people say, oh, this is horrible for us to me. Things that aren't last, the batteries, you know, whatever they bring up in terms of objection, I'd like to, you know, vet it. Somebody else's knowledge, yeah, so it makes sense.
Yeah, and I think, you know, staff is not, uh, monolithic, right? We're going to have, you're going to have like, people who know, and people who don't know as much, right? And, and so having the people who know at the table, I think it's very smart, from our own staff, from Mark's and whoever, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, overall, I don't want this to be an ever so. Because if, if it's the money in terms of the cost, ultimately everyone care. By the way, where is the money?
Well, it's going to be the next, yeah, I mean, that's what we want to find out what it looks like.
Yeah.
And you probably can pilot some stuff, but fast, right? Test out some things. I mean, I think your point about be careful about your incentives, you know? Your incentives have a way of, if you go terribly wrong, it's a famous, uh, English company that was giving away whatever, uh, dishwashers or something like that, and it just totally, went off the rails. So we just have to be careful. I think testing things, you know, maybe that's what, what we can, accomplish, you know, earlier, and then we want to talk about it, but that might look like, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, do we want to circle back on a date with staff and others just to like see what might work? It'll take, are we talking to a, a minimum like, uh, you, your staff, Alex, uh, Parkinson, what the board can find a time and, we have a good meeting done, but, um, probably in, on Wednesday, you know, in mid-February. And, yeah, maybe we just follow up on that, when we get still for some, tentative dates, uh, now, if it's wanted.
I, I would say from the staff perspective, I think just take a day.
Yeah.
You know, we'll just try to make it work, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're proposing the first call of the meeting in mid-February?
Yeah.
Uh, in evening time, when people aren't working, early evening, uh, not Wednesday.
Yeah.
And, uh, in the council chambers. I don't know, I mean, if there's ten companies and, I don't know, two or three employees turn up.
Yeah.
With boss, you're going to put the, probably one or two, so.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea. Also, then.
I, I kind of think that separation and formality.
So we could, so we could, you know, that's a, yes.
If we can set up a big.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I agree. We don't want to be looking down at the, you must.
What, uh, do you want to do? Because you dare go trick, maybe you have to go out.
I can have to make a quick run for it, yeah. I mean, again, I think from our perspective, I think we would be able to get, it would be probably work in the future. You have the calendars, so I would try to avoid a, uh, I do best on a night.
Yeah.
Questions that Matt had.
Yeah, I've got it written down. It's like, you can start on that, but if you follow, we'll normalize that, yeah, but I can, I'll start with.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Alex. You don't think like a Tuesday or a Thursday, Monday, what do you?
Yes, um, we just here, it's best, um.
Uh, council chambers looks pretty booked, we can, February thirteenth through seventeenth. Uh, well, Friday the seventeenth is up, I'm guessing Friday, it's a great time.
Yeah.
Before Thursday, we have a meeting in chambers, the week after, it's like mainly, meetings in chambers on Wednesday, so you can look at that Monday or Tuesday, if you want to go out that far.
Tuesday, the twenty first. Reasonable or? All right, with you.
Tuesday's good.
Also, the committee might not think the same, whatever.
Uh, I think Chris needs to, I think, and, uh, with the, it's a third.
It's the previous.
Previous is the. Okay.
There's a economic development commission meeting that I didn't, Foskey, uh, four P M, four, four, yeah, safety and the Foskey and a commission on the status.
Thanks, there's some thirty five of those.
Is this where you say the twenty first?
Yeah. Well, it's actually. More explicitly.
I, I was following.
Okay, six thirty, you think? End time, eight thirty? That should give us enough time to do that. Do you want me to speak down for the meeting?
Yeah, I can, um, follow up with staff in the coming days, uh, to get a first draft of questions, as well as some like, the next steps that we talked about, and how each other's stuff, and just invite input from many members and, try to wrap that all up in the next couple of weeks, uh, to get a survey out in January. I had mentioned the, uh, the Seattle, Washington, uh, resolution. I don't think we need to go into it necessarily, like cover some of the topics, but it might be worth looking at, like I said, it's a day email. In particular, the things, I mean, they've got some, you know, where I saw some of the stuff, but they're kind of directing city staff to do a lot of the things we're talking about and or give feedback and information on, equity implications, what type of incentives or buyback program could we do, you know? What's the ideal, right, and correct mechanism and enforcement, what are the costs that might come from, refine our questions a bit? Um, and then I also did just mention the noise ordinance, we talked about elements of it, and I think it's worth a review too. Those seven, just sort of be aware of what's the types of things that are in there already.
I think, uh, the environmental issues per view over noise. That's one of their, yeah.
Okay.
So we might invite them to.
Yeah, and we've got Joseph here, because, yeah, I think if you got some environmental vision, both, uh, on the, help them with outreach, um, possibly later on with public education campaigns, that's sort of in, um, both, in a sense.
Uh, Matt, did you pick the Washington resolution because you thought it was such a, so any, uh, good model?
Uh, it's, it's a model. It's not, it's not an ordinance, right? So that's more, more, more so I thought it did a good job of like laying out, kind of the, the topics that, that, uh, need to be covered in terms of, uh, asking city staff to weigh in on, you know, certain things out timelines.
Okay.
And that sort of thing. So it's just, it should be good, uh, framework.
Yeah.
It's interesting because they talk about, uh, they want their staff to evaluate use of leak blowers, both gas powered and electric, either by allowing these to naturally compose or clearing them using non-vodarized methods.
Wow, this was just a desk, this is just adopted in September.
All right.
Okay, sounds good.
Any final thoughts before we, uh, wrap up?
Good start.
Do we have any public?
Oh, yeah. Uh, Hugh didn't know that back and said he had, he had no confidence in us. Getting anything done on this since we just passed the meeting, but, uh.
That's a shame.
I'll, uh, I'll let him know that the R and D is a progress and encourage him to engage there.
Okay.
Or anybody can, yeah.
Just, just cats on Zoom.
All right. Um, okay.
Ron, Ron, are you, Bill? Are you sick?
I woke up with a nice cold this morning, and I'm just blowing my nose and coughing, and that's no fun.
Yeah, thanks for staying home.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to come in.
Yeah.
Well, take care, Ron. Hope you feel better.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to drink some RT and maybe a little Scotch on the way home. Before I go to bed.
Yeah, on the way to bed. Looks like you're already home.
All right, well, um, I think we can.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Good meeting.